Calling this special meeting of the city council to order and invite you all to join us in saying that we're leaving this. Today's agenda includes several items. Next up is general comment by the public. Then we'll move into agenda item number four, which is a hearing regarding vicious dog allegations. After which, the council will move into a deliberative session and then they will adjourn. So the stage of the meeting that we're at right now is public comment, general public comment. There will be an opportunity for public comment relative to the vicious dog allegations later in the agenda. Does anyone wish to comment at this point in time? I'm seeing none. We'll move to agenda item number four, a hearing regarding vicious dog allegations. Before we go further, I'd like to announce that I am recusing myself from this matter. This happened in my neighborhood across the street from me. I know the neighbors and the dogs involved. If anything, I think it would be more appropriate for me to recuse myself and potentially offer a public comment during the hearing. So with that, I am turning the... I'm giving you a gavel. Chat with me. This little gavel is yours.
Any other councilors that need to recuse themselves?
Yes, I feel I need to recuse myself because of my past relationship with Mr. Levy. I used to work for him. And so I feel it's probably appropriate that I step down from the chair.
Thank you.
I'll recuse myself on behalf of Mr. Levy. And I wouldn't want the public to associate that relationship with any decisions based on my insight.
Thank you. Any others? So how this is going to work is, at the beginning, as we call you up, please, before you start talking, just state your name, so Kristen has the ability to write that in minutes. First up will be the police department. They'll be able to give testimony. Then the injured party will give testimony. Then the presentation by the dog owner. So the dog owner will give testimony. If the council has any questions of those three groups, we'll do that after that's all been done. And then the public will have an opportunity to comment if there's other people that wish to. And at that time, we will close the hearing. So as we are presenting, please present to the council, not to the people behind you. We don't want any talking back and forth that's just kind of discussing with us. After that's done, we will go into deliberative session. And after that is finished, we will, in writing, give a notice to the dog owner. So first up would be the police department.
Good evening, Lieutenant Ben Kutcher. On October 6, 2017, at approximately 15:06 hours, the St. Albans Police Department responded to the area of 21 Messenger Street in the city of St. Albans for a vicious dog complaint. During the course of the investigation, officers learned the following. The dog owner, Robin Hakey, is the owner of Brooklyn who resides at 14 Messenger Street in the city of St. Albans. Brooklyn is a white-black pit bull and is up to date on rabies vaccinations, which expire on 5/23/2019. Hakey advised that she rescued Brooklyn from a kill shelter in Brooklyn, New York, which she believed Brooklyn was used for breeding. Hakey admitted that Brooklyn is not registered within the city of St. Albans. She was issued a written warning by Animal Control Officer James Levinson. Robin Levy is an owner of Madison, which resides at 16 Messenger Street, apartment number two in the city of St. Albans. Madison is a black Chihuahua-Pug mix, which is two years old, and is up to date on rabies vaccinations, which expire on January 26, 2020. James Levy provided a written statement to police. Levy advised that he was attacked by a pit bull on Friday, October 6, 2017. Levy stated that he was walking with his wife, Ann, and his daughter's dog, Madison. Levy observed a school bus drop off some children at the residence of 14 Messenger Street. According to Levy, when the front door was opened by the children, the pit bull ran out the door and attacked them both. Madison and himself... Excuse me. Attacked both Madison and himself. Levy stated that the pit bull kept mauling Madison, who was scared and stunned at the time. Levy advised that he kept yanking on the leash, trying to separate the dogs. During the course of the altercation between the two dogs, Levy was knocked to the street, injuring his, I believe, left shoulder and knee. Levy advised that he was finally able to separate the two dogs. There is a photograph that is attached which shows an injury to Mr. Levy. Ann provided... Excuse me. Ann Levy, which is the wife of James Levy, provided a written statement to police. Ann explained while walking their daughter's dog, Madison, on the sidewalk on Messenger Street, Ann stated that two young children got off the school bus and entered 14 Messenger Street. Ann stated that while the two children opened the door, a large pit bull ran out of the residence to attack their daughter's dog, Madison. Ann stated that Levy was pushed to the ground as he was trying to protect their daughter's dog. Ann advised the owner of the pit bull came running, came out, and brought it back inside. Ann stated that she noticed a small amount of blood on Madison's back leg, who was then taken to the vets and evaluated. Robin Hakey, which is the owner of Brooklyn, stated that the kids were coming in from the house, getting off from the school bus, and the neighbors were out front of the residence with a dog. Hakey advised that Brooklyn got out the door. According to Hakey, when the neighbors saw her, Brooklyn, coming, they immediately started freaking out and eventually fell on top of the dogs. Hakey stated that she was able to get a hold of Brooklyn and put her inside. Hakey added that Brooklyn has attended doggy daycare and never had any issues. Angela Bernard, who has witnessed the incident, came outside to also speak with police. Bernard advised young children who live at 14 Messenger Street got home, opened their front door. Bernard stated that the pit bull ran at Levy, and he fell to the ground, which caused a tussle. Bernard explained that she went over because Levy was screaming at the children, and she, Bernard, felt that they did not need to be out back. The police department received a veterinarian report from Dr. Gunther concerning Madison's injuries during the altercation. Dr. Gunther's report states two superficial abrasions to both rear legs, and then he said that the dog should be okay. The police department received Levy's hospital discharge paperwork from the Northwestern Medical Center from the dog altercation also. The report of Animal Control Officer Jim Benson stated, "I made an appointment and met with Mr. James Levy on Sunday, October 8, 2017. Mr. Levy..." James Levy downed and injured his elbow and shoulder. Mr. Levy stated he took Madison to the veterinarian, and Madison had an abrasion on her inner thigh. Mr. Levy also said Madison's tail was injured during the altercation. Mr. Levy saw a doctor for his elbow and shoulder injuries. I took photographs of those wounds on his left elbow. His wife, Ann..." Levy wrote a statement on another incident in the past. I took pictures of Madison. Madison's wounds on her inner thigh had healed after the incident, and there was no marks that were left. Ms. Hakey stated that she thought Brooklyn went after Madison because Mr. Levy freaked out and Brooklyn got along with other dogs at doggy daycare. When she realized Brooklyn got out, she went out and brought her inside. I know both Mr. Levy and Ms. Hakey and Ms. Bernard are here tonight to talk to you.
Thank you. And is that it from the police department?
Yes.
So Jim and Ann, if you would like to come up?
Sure. I would like to first state in my own words what happened. I believe there's a part of the record, the excellent report of Animal Control Officer Benson, is missing the report of Corporal Cote, which is equally excellent, and I'd like to have you folks consider it. I have a copy of it if you would like. But essentially, on a beautiful sunny afternoon, which was Friday, October 6... I'm walk... I'm sorry. It's October 6. I was walking with my wife, our daughter's dog, Madison. Madison is a very small rescue dog. It's part Chihuahua, part Pug. Suddenly, a school bus pulled up, and two children, among others, were discharged. The children ran into the house. The door opened, and suddenly, this horrible vicious animal appeared and started packing Madison. I was frantic and very, very concerned, because Madison is a therapy dog for my daughter, Robin, who has been very sick and, as we talk right now, is suffering from a blocked digestive system, which compounds other challenging issues she has. Our only real contact with the outer world is with this wonderful dog, Madison. So from my perspective, yes, I freaked out, but I want to correct one gross misstatement, and that is, the freaking out occurred in the context of my trying to rescue my daughter's therapy dog, and I was going to do anything that I could to save this dog, because the implications of that dog perishing would mean a devastating traumatic episode to my daughter. So I was very freaked out, very agitated.
But only after the dog had come out and made a beeline for our dog.
Yeah. So I think it's important to establish at the outset, we were attacked, or I was attacked, or initially my Madison was attacked, and in that context, I did very much freak out. I was able to extricate Madison from the jaws of this vicious animal, and was holding it. In the process, I was thrown to the ground too, and ended up with a laceration on my elbow, and I sprained my shoulder. After the dogs were separated, Ms. Hakey did come out, and expletives were exchanged. I take exception to the statement attributed to Ms. Bernard that I was screaming at the children. The children were in the house at all times, and I would never do that. It was not the children's fault. I was screaming, and I believe this was not one of my finer moments. I did exchange some very choice expletives with Ms. Hakey, who appropriately responded in kind, and that was where this quote "screaming" occurred. A statement would be... Ultimately, what happened was my wife, Ann, picked up this little dog, and by now, our daughter came out and was hysterical. And we took... When I say "we," Ann, took Madison to the veterinarian, and I took myself separately to the emergency room. Part of my reason for going there was I wanted to make sure that my blood pressure was quite elevated, and I had had an episode the previous week in May, where I had to be in York Main Hospital for this situation. I wanted to make sure that there was no exacerbation of the symptoms from that other episode. The notion that, which was mentioned, that this pit bull gets along with other dogs, I believe is an outright fabrication, and I say that because I had occasion to speak to Dr. Grunler, Shantling Veterinary Clinic, and there was an entry in the dog's chart from July 2017, where the... Apparently, the owner, Ms. Hakey, stated that the...
That was in the police report from...
No, that's something else.
No, that sentence was...
Apparently, in July 2017, Ms. Hakey stated that this pit bull gets along well with other human beings, but is hostile to other dogs. That's the language, hostile to other dogs. What my wife, Ann, just alluded to was in the police statement, I believe there is mention, and I think this is quite important, that the... And I think I should read it exactly as it appears. This, I believe, is from Corporal Cote's report. There is mention made that when he, Corporal Cote, interviewed Ms. Hakey, she, Ms. Hakey, indicated walking the small dog instigates her pit bull. Please think about that. Walking the small dog instigates her pit bull. There are a lot of small dogs and other animals that walk in St. Albans. I want to emphasize that Madison was on a leash. We were at all times on the sidewalk. We did not linger in front of 14 Messenger Street. We were walking as any other family might on a beautiful sunny afternoon, and were viciously attacked. My concern, my main concern, and that's why I think it's so important that this hearing be held, is we were lucky. We were very lucky. There were no serious injuries here. Madison is going to be fine, but I believe it is inevitable, and I will state that for the record, that this is going to happen again. And if any of you think for a moment that the next time you're confronted with this is just an attack on a small dog, I think you're being somewhat naïve. What started this whole episode was the pulling up of a school bus. So next time, let's fast forward a month from now, whatever. School bus arrives, these two little girls go to their home, and one of them is bringing a friend, and the pit bull is doing what the pit bull would like to do, defend her two children from this stranger. That child is going to be attacked. Pit bulls are notorious for this type of aggressive behavior. And this particular pit bull, based upon the entry in Dr. Grunler's chart from July 2017, where there was an admission by Ms. Hakey that the pit bull does... is hostile to other small dogs, I think is indicative of a very hostile attitude. This will occur again. And I also have to mention that I'm very fortunate that I was attacked. If my daughter had been attacked and if she had been walking the dog, we would not have a favorable outcome, because I don't think my daughter, who's a very small, fragile individual, would have been able to have saved her dog. And I think it's quite probable that, at the very least, Madison would have been seriously maimed, and a very good possibility that my daughter would have severely maimed herself. And I would hate to see her hospitalized for the rest of her life as a consequence of a future attack. But I think what the council has to focus on is probabilities. And I think the course of this activity, when coupled with the information that is in the records of this dog with Dr. Grunler, would lead any reasonable council to conclude that this dog is a menace to the general safety of the public. I would lastly like to bring to the attention what the law is, what the ordinance is. I think this city council has to be guided by Section 2807D. And I'm sure you've read it, and I'm not going to lecture about it, but it states very clearly that if the pet, in this case, the pit bull, is found to have attacked, threatened to attack, doesn't even have to attack, threatened to attack, bitten, or caused reasonable fear... All it has to do is cause reasonable fear to a person of bodily injury. That's all that has to be shown. Or has wounded... Well, I was wounded. Killed or woreied a pet of another person without provocation. And again, we submit, with zero provocation. The notion that a dog can be freaked out by a person standing in front of property on the sidewalk, to me, is a very troublesome premise. But in any case, we were attacked, and the ordinance goes on to say, "The city council, if you find that this happened," and I don't see how there's any dispute that this is what happened, "the city council shall..." Not "may," it's "shall" make an order for the protection of persons as the facts and circumstances of the case may require." With a u. s. discretion, what you can do. You have to make an order, then. You can't ignore it. And it states including without limitation. So the ordinance provides, I think, four things you could do. It doesn't preclude other avenues as well. So among the ones that are mentioned, that the pet is disposed of in a humane way, which to me means euthanasia, muzzled, chained, or confined. So that's what you have to do, or you know, come up with some other particular solution, but you can't ignore it. The last thing I will say, and then we can move on, is my wife... I would like her to testify about an episode which occurred previously, and I think it's important that she also express what she saw and experienced.
Is it related to this incident? So we try not to...
Yes, very much related. Sometime in summer, I was walking said Madison on the upper side of Messenger Street, and I got to the driveway across the street from both of the two houses. My daughter lives right next door. And the pit bull was on the porch, on the leash, being held by its own leash, being held by the owner, lunging and barking, and lunging and barking, and I just froze in place. There was no way I was going to cross to go home. And the dog did not stop, was not controlled until it was put inside. And that was a really frightening thing for me, and I... No. It was frightening. The other thing is that my daughter has, for months, said that dog fangs with his paws on the dog, barking at anything that goes by, barking and barking, and her window faced their window of a single driveway. So the idea that just because we walked by a house with a dog on a leash gets the dog so upset that the moment we come back... And of course, if you're walking, you've got to return. You know, we're not going to keep going. The right side of the street, and come back again. And that dog just had its mind to attack the little dog. And I don't know how often it looks at this dog, but my daughter says this dog barks continuously at the window. And it's just very unsafe. I'm not sure how, if the dog remains, how she's going to maim it. I mean, obviously, she'll walk the other direction, but that doesn't change the circumstance. Someone's going to be hurt. And it's very ironic. Well, no, it's just a horrible thing.
You have a tough decision to make, but I think what should be paramount in your mind is not just what happened, but what could and probably will happen.
And this is in a two-month period, we're saying. This is October 6, and sometime in August, I had this other incident. And you sort of let one go by, but now you don't.
Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Now, Hakeys would like to come up?
Hi.
And you are?
Robin, sorry. This is my husband, Andrew. So on October 6, my children got off the bus, and out of habit, I had locked the door when I had come in from getting my youngest off the bus a hour earlier. So they got off the bus and were trying to get in the door. I went over and unlocked the door, and when they opened it, I didn't realize at the time they were standing in front with the dog. But when they opened the door, Brooklyn got out, and I immediately went out after, and as he was twirling and trying to get Madison away from Brooklyn, he tripped and fell over the dogs. At that point was when I was able to grab Brooklyn by her collar and get her away and to go back inside. And that is when their daughter came out screaming. He was yelling racial slurs, calling new names, and my children were very much outside. They were on the porch, right outside our door. So... And that's when I just went in and shut the door and waited for the police to arrive. I did witness Angela talking to him through the window afterwards. I don't know. I didn't know at the time what they were talking about or whatnot. But I have videos of Brooklyn at doggy daycare around other dogs. There was never, at one point at all, where I ever saw Brooklyn have the dog in her mouth or any persons in her mouth. So I don't... I wouldn't consider it a mauling. She... You know, the dog would have puncture wounds, I would think, if she'd bit the dog. And there has been times... We have... We've owned her for four years. This is the first time anything like this has ever happened out of four years. When we first moved in, we moved in the end of July. There was a handful of times their daughter was walking their dog and stopped in front of our house and sat on her cellphone while our dog was in the window barking. So in my opinion, that's basically taunting our dog. It hasn't happened recently, but I would say a good three or four times it has happened. I wish now that I would have reported it when she was doing it. But as far as Brooklyn goes, she's a great dog. She's a great family dog. She does get excited and anxious when she sees other animals, but we've never had this happen before. This is the first time it's ever happened. And like I said, I have videos from the doggy daycare provider from the times that she was there out in the yard with the other dogs, running around, the normal dog.
We are taking steps to make sure this doesn't happen again. We've done some repairs to the house recently, so our doorbell was taken down, but I would have mentioned, yeah. I've recently replaced it. The kids now know that when they get home from school, they'll do to hit the door alone. Mom will come to the door. If I'm home, I will come to the door. But mom will come to the door, make sure the dog's secure, so that when it's opened, the kids can come in without a problem. Also, down the road, we're looking to enclose the porch, so at which point it won't be an issue at all, because go in one door, close it, then you can open the other door, so it won't be a problem. So we are taking steps to make sure this doesn't happen again. But I know vicious dogs. When I was 10, I was attacked and actually had my cheek taken off by a dog. I was petrified of dogs for years, and I told Robin that if we bring a dog into the house with our little ones, if it is vicious at all, it's gone. I don't want it in the house to have the same thing happen to one of our kids that happened to me. Our six-year-old can ride Brooklyn like a horse. She plays with her constantly. We have never had an issue. To say she is vicious is...
I mean, the Animal Control Officer, like, he came to the house and he met her, and she wasn't aggressive in any way. Is there anything else that you can think of, I can't...
Okay. Thank you both. Does...
Do you want to see the video? Like, do you want to see the video?
I'm okay, but I don't know... Yeah, I think... Thank you, though. Does the council have any questions?
What about the letter? I do have a letter also from the doggy daycare provider.
Well, we can submit it for the record. Yeah, we can just give it a first minute. Thank you so much. Does any of the council members have questions for any members of the parties? So my only question I have is you moved into the city the end of July.
We live on... We lived on Federal Street. We've lived in the city for five years, five years or so. We just moved from Federal to Messenger.
Okay. At this time, the council has no questions, so we'll offer the public an opportunity to comment. So if you would like to raise your hand, we can try to call on you if you'd like to comment. Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much for giving me the time. So I think I've been near animal control officer for 38 years, retired in 2013. Dogs, whether they're small, medium, or large, if you know the behavior of the animal, you can easily control the bite. If it's a chihuahua, you want a smaller chain. As dogs get bigger, like rockweathers and pit bulls and labs, sometimes you need a heavier chain. You know, when it comes to an aggressive bite, you know, I've been there. I've had, one time I got bit by 17 puncture wounds in my leg from a dog bite. You know, the responsibility of the city is to take, make sure to make a decision on whether the dog should be muzzle, confined, or chained, and stuff like that, or to be euthanized. You know, a lot of times when I worked with animals within the city, you know, I ran into pit bulls and stuff like that. Any animal can be made aggressive, you know. But I hope that the decision you make will be for the interest of not only Mr. and Mrs. Levy, but Mrs. Hakey, and the benefit of the dog. You know, if it came to a serious attack, you know, or puncture wounds to the leg, like I had at one time, that is what I call a vicious attack. When it comes to a case where Mr. Levy was knocked down, I'm not sticking up for Mr. Levy. I'm here because he asked me to come here and to listen to the case. And, you know, I think if, you know, if you make a decision that they're going to keep the dog, then it should be either muzzle at all times when it comes out that door, or you're complying with the property with a chain link fence or in a cement path. You know, if the dog had a behavior problem and was on the veterinarian's chair, and that's a power of evidence that you might not consider. But, you know, the responsibility of the pet owner, you know, because of the fact, you know, I've been involved in cases, one in Georgia where a child was bitten on top of the head, chewed off half the year, and a million-dollar suit on this one. You know, so, you know, whatever decision you make, make it for the right and don't let, you know, politics or friendship get involved. Do what's right for the dog and also the two people that are here tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any other? Ms. Mayor?
May I come up and sit?
Absolutely.
I'm getting nervous. I'm actually so nervous that I wrote it all down, and I made multiple copies for everyone. So I'd rather submit that, and I can just read from it a little bit?
Yes.
Just because I'm just not good at this. I'm a better writer than I am a speaker. Thank you. First of all, I just had a couple of notes. You can read my complete record, what I witnessed and what I saw, especially what I heard, which is more important than what I saw. But I just want to point out a couple of inaccuracies that have come up this evening. First of all, I apologize if I gave the police department the impression that I saw the dog run at Mr. Levy. I never saw that, I don't recall saying that. And that's certainly not my record of what I witnessed that afternoon. I did see the aftermath. I saw the end of the incident and the aftermath, and I never saw the dog actually leave the home. So, and I wrote that clearly. Anyway, also from the Mr. and Mrs. Levy's report, when Mr. Levy said that he rescued the dog from the jaws of the other animal, I never saw anything to that effect. That afternoon, I saw Mr. Levy fall or dive to the ground to get in between the two dogs. I never saw the larger dog bite the smaller dog. I never saw the larger dog bite anyone that day. Also, Mrs. Levy mentioned that their daughter had said that the pit bull barks at anything that goes by. And I'd also like to say that I think that's inaccurate because I live four doors down, five doors down. I walk that street every single day with my children, and I didn't even know they had a dog until that day. I think, sorry. The whole incident was more bad behavior from humans than from animals. I didn't actually see dogs doing anything other than what dogs do, but I saw plenty of bad behavior from the humans involved. The children most definitely let the dog out. The dog went running down the road, I mean, down the walkway. I heard screaming from multiple voices. I got off my porch, I walked down into my front yard. I looked over, and I definitely saw a tussle. Like I said, I didn't see any biting. And I saw the homeowner, who I hadn't actually met yet, they're my new neighbors. They just moved in. I did see them come down and take the dog away from the scene. And then I heard all kinds of yelling and horrendous name-calling and obscenities that nobody needs to hear. And then at one point, my 13-year-old daughter looked at me and said, "Mom, I think she doesn't have an adult with her." And that's when I got involved because the child in question is in eighth grade, and she's 13 years old, the same age as my daughter. And so I went down just to speak on her behalf because there's no reason why anybody should have to listen to the name-calling that was being said that afternoon from Mr. Levy directed towards the residents of that home, much less a 13-year-old child. And so I went over and I said, I asked his daughter first because I actually know her from previous experiences when I worked at the public library. I asked, "Are you okay?" And she said, "Yes." I said, "Is the dog okay?" And she said, "Yes." And they were very clearly hysterical, her and her mother. And then I said, "Okay, look, if she's home alone, you can't talk to her that way. She's 13 years old, you cannot scream at a 13-year-old child." And that's when I was accosted by Mr. Levy. And he came running up screaming at me, "What's your name? Who are you? Where do you live?" And I said, "I'm not telling you anything." And he said, "Well, I don't know who you are." And I said, "Well, I know who you are, and I don't like you." Because I know his reputation. And I tried to walk away, and he screamed at me the whole way down the street, yelling at me while I was trying to walk away. I said, "Look, I thought the child was home alone. I thought the child was home alone, and I was trying to intercede on her behalf. Otherwise, I wouldn't have gotten involved." And he did apologize to me later. He came over and he said that I was probably correct in my assessment of his behavior, and that he apologized to me for treating me the way that he did. And then he walked away, did not appear injured. I didn't notice any injuries on his body. He wasn't limping, he wasn't favoring his shoulder. He walked away normally and went home while his daughter and his wife took the dog to the veterinarian's office. So whether or not he was injured, he sure as heck wasn't shown it that afternoon. But I can't really say. Otherwise, I will say, though, that I have two children, I live on the street, and I'm getting a puppy in two weeks. So I don't know what the dog's intentions were when it came out of the house that day, but it does make me nervous if it can't be around other animals. So I don't know who is more wrong. I don't know who was up for a fight that day. I don't know if it was the dog, I don't know if it was the humans. Certainly, everybody involved, I don't think anybody behaved properly that afternoon. But it does make me nervous having a small dog and small children on that street if there is a dangerous dog. I just have to say that also.
Thank you very much. Your talking section is over, so I'm going to let us all comment right now, okay? So I think there might be a few more people that would like to comment.
But I do want to respond to the definite-
It's better if we don't respond. We have what you have to say, we'll take it, we, you know, we'll be able to wait.
Suffice to say, this is another side that would happen. If I were to describe to the council the language that Ms. Bernard used to me in the moment when-
Yes, sir.
We were in a very uncarried position. It would be very unleading, like-
Yes, yes, sir.
Actually, it's in my statement in the written statement I handed to you as to what I said to him, so feel free.
Is there anyone else?
Talking, Mr. Levy?
Yes, I will.
Is there anyone else that has anything that they would like to comment? Any other members of the public? Ms. Grant?
I recuse myself from this decision because it's close to where I live. The residence is across the street and diagonal, and then Madison lives two doors down. Happened to know the dogs involved, I know the people involved. So it felt very, very close in terms of the neighborhood relationships. What I wanted to share with you is that until this happened, and I received a call from members of my household as the scene was unfolding after the incident, I was not aware that the Hinkys had a dog. We walk our dog about five times a day. I usually do two to three of those walks. I'm pretty aware of where the dogs are on the street. And it was news to me that the neighbors across the street have a dog. Other members of my family were aware, and their observation had been that the dog went outside, was contained on the porch, and had an adult with it when it was on the porch. I'll just add that part of, part of the reason I got the call from my family when the incident was unfolding, I was out of town at work, but I had a family member who was particularly disturbed by the conduct that was being expressed on the street, including some of what you've heard earlier about the type of discourse that was taking place. I have a small dog, I have kids. I am concerned about safety. I think that if the dog can be contained, I would feel, I would feel reasonably comfortable that the risks were being mitigated. And I think being aware of the structure of the house and the setup, that that is probably a good possibility that a porch could be closed off in a manner that would reduce the risks significantly. I think that's, that's all I've got to say for now.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay, so right now, we will close this hearing. We are going to deliberative session and make a decision on what should happen, and usually a day or two to get a written notification. So the parties should receive written notification in 24 to 48 hours, would be my guess. Thank you, everyone. So do we have a motion to move the council into deliberative session?
A motion to move it into deliberative session.
Say. All votes in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
Aye.